I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present except Councilmember Lenz and Councilmember Miller, who will not be joining us this evening, as far as we know.
Vacation wonderful, all right. Adoption of the agenda, any deletions, additions, changes, or otherwise?
Move to adopt agenda?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Oath? Okay, we have an operating menu, and first thing I want to ask, City Attorney, if there's anything to report out from closed session tonight?
There's nothing to report from closed session, it was discussion only.
Okay, that brings us to oral communications, number one, which I have a slip here from former mayor and council member, Michael Barnes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Michael Barnes, and I'm a Brisbane resident. I'm here tonight to speak about art in the skate park. Over the course of council discussions about the skate park, Councilwoman Lou has proposed that art be integrated into the design of a new skate park, both through skatable art, which is an object placed in the site, like a statue or sculpture, or a mural. Both are examples of public art. At this point, I think it's helpful to review what public art is. First, it is a creation, an artist's self-expression that is meant to attract attention, be noticed, experienced, and hopefully be memorable. Experience of the art should change the mental or physical environment, and may be educational, enjoyable, celebratory, transformative, an enhancement, or demarcate a location. Public art should reflect the values of the community, yet may question assumptions as well. Art should enrich the community by evoking meaning in the public forum, raise awareness, inspire, or provide perspective. Integrated or site-based public art uses the location, history, culture, and social circumstance. Some integrated public art is ephemeral, meant to be transitory, like Andy Goldsworthy's Spire. The result of different experiences of public art may lead to community dialogue, with the possibility that the art gives the community identity. But not all art will appeal to all people, and no one's definition of public art describes it as an economic engine. Street stencils by Basquiat and Banksy are forms of public art, and they speak to the skaters. But stencils are not just the province of graffiti artists. Pauchoir, is that close? French? Pauchoir is the French word for stencil. And Picasso, Miro, and Matisse all use pauchoir in their book illustrations. Roy Lichtenstein also used stencils to create the half-tone dots in his paintings. Shepherd Ferry is a skater, whose art grew out of the skating subculture. Since skating is part of popular culture, it is no surprise that Mr. Ferry works in the pop art tradition started by Andy Warhol and Lichtenstein. Shepherd Ferry is best known for creating the Obama stencil, Hope. Basquiat, Banksy, and Ferry are, or in Basquiat's case were, not just graffiti stencilers, but contemporary artists of merit. Basquiat has been exhibited in the Guggenheim, Mr. Ferry's stencil portrait of Obama hangs in the National Portrait Gallery in Washington DC, which is part of the Smithsonian Institution. And examples of Banksy's stencils are valued in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and were recently featured in a front-page article in the San Francisco Chronicle. Two years ago, Brisbane skaters stenciled public art in the skate park. The word "Brisbane" was stenciled on the back of the half-pipe, visible to everyone entering and exiting town on Old County Road. The "A" in Brisbane is instead a stencil of a Brisbane skater performing an ollie. Brisbane skaters have taken pictures of each other, created stencils, and spray-painted them in their skate park. This public art illustrates our evolving culture and reflects and reveals our society. It is noticeable, memorable, adds meaning to our city, creates a chronicle of our public experience, and provides a city identity at the entrance to town better than the Bank of America does. Furthermore, the skaters' art has enhanced the skate park, it celebrates an active youth culture, and demarcates the skate park with a positive mental environment. The skate park art has raised awareness of our children, inspires them, and provides perspective to non-skaters. The skaters use materials and methods consistent with the contemporary culture. The success of their art is invention, boldness, and cooperation, not compromise. Their art connects with and represents their community and ours. It is a great example of integrated art that reflects the culture and use of the site. The skaters' art has made our community more cohesive. Just as a big, angry, expensive brass bull sculpture is fitting on Wall Street, ephemeral stencils of skaters, spray-painted by the skaters themselves, are appropriate in the Brisbane skate park. It is their skate park, so the art in this place should be comfortable to them and reflect who they are. Their work is transitory graffiti, true to the street culture of skating. It is clear that their art fulfills the preponderance of requirements for public art. While it is admirable to consider public art in the new skate park project, it is puzzling that there has not been any acknowledgement of the existing skate park art. To acknowledge the existing art, and its suitability for the location, the use of the location, and the users, and as a welcome home sign to all who live in Brisbane, would show understanding of and appreciation for public art. The skaters are artists. I hope the city will encourage and enhance the skate artists' involvement, and not reduce it with architects, designers, professional artists, concerned citizens, politicians, advisory committees, approval agencies, funding agencies, or construction teams. Who knows, we may have the next Shepherd Ferry skating in the park right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else wish to speak in oral communication? Ken, I guess that means you. No? No, okay. All right, that brings us to the consent calendar. We do have a couple, set of corrected minutes here of April 21st and May 5th. So, does anybody wish to pull anything from the calendar?
Well, those were the two that I had polled, and I haven't yet had a chance to review the corrections, so if we could have just a moment to do that.
Okay, and these were corrections that you submitted today, Lori?
I submitted them earlier in the week, they're type of golf.
Do we have it marked what the corrections were?
Yes.
Yeah. And some of them were spellings and camera monitor.
Well, I was, had been happy with the minutes as they were, so...
I've reviewed the corrections, and I'm fine with them as corrected.
Okay.
So, move to approve the consent calendar?
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, and that was items A through H, which A through D were minutes, and item E, which was approved plans and specifications, authorized notice inviting bids of overlay project 2014. F was adoption of resolution number 202014-33, ratifying and approving the agreement for purchase of real property consisting on one undeveloped parcel of land located in the Acres. And item G was adopt resolution number 2014-34, approving the filing of an application for grant funds under California Coastal Conservancy or San Francisco Bay Area Conservancy Program. Item H was adopt resolution number 2014-35 regarding pay scale for hourly employees. Okay, that was interesting. I don't want to jinx the meeting now, so... Twelve minutes into it, made it through oral communications and...
Consent calendar.
Consent calendar, man, we're on a roll. Okay, brings us to a public hearing, which item A is Sierra Point Lighting and Landscaping District, and Karen, you're up on that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is a public hearing to establish the assessment at the Sierra Point Lighting and Landscaping District based on a proportionate share per area of property, and there is a number of steps to follow to open a public hearing, the first being the mayor's statement and declaration, the public hearing is open.
Okay, this is a formal thing that we do every year, and this statement does need to be read by the mayor, and then also from the city clerk, so this will be the opening statement by myself from the city of Brisbane, July 17, 2014, Sierra Point Landscaping and Lighting District. This is the time and place set for hearing on the engineer's report and the levy and collection of the proposed assessment for fiscal year 2014-2015 for the Sierra Point Landscape and Lighting District. These proceedings were undertaken pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. The engineer's report prepared by the engineer of work consists of the proposed improvements, the boundaries of the district, assessment district, and any zones therein, the proposed diagram, the estimate of cost thereof, and the proposed assessments upon assessable lots and parcels of land within the district. Any one of these items may be the subject of protest or endorsements. You are asked to clearly identify yourself and the property owned by you, so that the statements may be correctly recorded. The hearing is declared open, and I will ask the city clerk to report on various notices given in connection with the hearing.
Notices have been mailed and posted as required by the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. Proofs of mailing are and posting are on file in my office. A copy of the engineer's report prepared by the engineer of work was filed in my office on June 3, 2014, and has been open to public inspection since that time.
Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Public hearing is closed. At this point, we consider adoption of resolution number 2014-29, overruling protests and ordering improvements and confirming the diagram and assessments for fiscal year 2014-2015. Do I have a motion to...
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution 2014-29.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Item B, a public hearing, city of Brisbane, local stormwater program fees. Okay, want to open the public hearing and take a public comment, but first, a staff report, please.
Mayor, members of the council, this is an assessment district in the entire city of Brisbane, for which we assess all parcels for stormwater fees. The fees have not changed in the past year or in many years, and the engineer's report is attached and provides detail of how the charges are assessed.
Okay, any council questions? All right, public hearing is deemed open. Does anybody wish to speak on this matter? Not hearing anybody? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All right, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Now, the council to consider adoption of resolution number 2014-31, resolution of the City Council of the city of Brisbane imposing charges for funding the local Brisbane stormwater program, authorizing placement of said charges on the 2014-2015 county tax roll, and authorizing the county tax collector to collect such charges. Do we have a motion for that?
Can I have discussion first?
Sure.
On this, I know that this fee does not cover all our needs for the stormwater fees, and so this is just a small amount that we're asking our property owners to contribute on their taxes. My question that I didn't, and I guess I should have said this when we were asking for staff questions, on the assessment for parcels, in the case of, say, the condominium project up at the northeast ridge, is that per unit that the amount is assessed, or is that based on the entire parcel?
It's a per-unit charge. There's a charge for multifamily dwellings, and it's, that's what they're charging. I could look it up if you would like to know what that amount is.
That would be the 2164 for multifamily R3, or different? Or it'd be commercial? Two different, two different commercials, commercial industrial one and commercial industrial Because that's not R3, that's considered...
Yeah, my question was more mostly, I did have a question about the condominiums, if they would be each separate parcels that would have the 948 fee, or the 2164 fee, and then also, say, if there's an R3 property here in local Brisbane, if, again, or a secondary dwelling unit, if that changes, if it's per unit or per parcel, so how that gets figured in, because it didn't quite spell it out for me enough in the...
Okay, yeah, that's a very good question. The condominiums are, have individual parcel numbers, and they're charged the 2164 amount. For a multi-unit, for a two-unit property, I don't believe those are separate parcels. Well, I would have to look those up, I'm not actually, I'm not actually sure if it's an R2, like a two-unit central Brisbane type of property is what you're asking?
Well, I mean, I don't really want to single anyone out, but, you know, I've seen a couple places that were built that have three units on a corner lot that are, I assumed, owned by three separate people, and would, I would assume that those would be a separate fee per, just like your property taxes would be.
Yes, and these are assessed on the property tax, so I'm going to assume, based on your description, that a three-unit like that is a multifamily charge, the 2164.
Well, it sounds like you probably have to do a little bit of research to answer that question, and we could probably come back for it, but I don't think it's going to change anything.
No, no, it's not going to. My other question was on the vacant land. You know, we've got different sizes of vacant land where, you know, and it's broken down on parcel size per acre for what the fee would be. But if one person owns two or three parcels, are they continued, considered one parcel or three parcels with three individual fees?
There's an assessment for every parcel number we have, unless it's owned by the city or another governmental agency. So if someone owns three parcels that they pay property tax on three times, they would pay this assessment three times also.
Okay, okay, because sometimes, I guess I was thinking more lots making a parcel.
Right.
And so, I have two lots that my home sits on, but that's one parcel.
Sure, and you maybe have done a lot-line adjustment to combine them to one parcel, or maybe that was done at some point?
I mean, might have been, I don't know. I just have more than one number that shows on the map only when tax bill comes. So, that was just my question on how we broke that down.
Maybe, David, maybe would you be able to clarify that, because if, if it's a condominium, I guess, what Karen's saying, there's a tax parcel that's associated with it, but the whole condominium owns the parcel of land, but it's broken down into each condominium, is that, how that works?
My understanding is that with the condominiums, you've got multiple units that are in private ownership, but on one underlying parcel, but each one is taxed individually, so they would each pay separately on the storm fee. If you had a single, single-family residence on multiple parcels, there should be, I believe, just one APN number, and you'd pay one fee for that whole parcel.
I see, okay. Did that answer your question, or did that make it more confusing?
No, it mostly answers my question, again, it does answer my question on the residential and the commercial. On the vacant land, you know, we, I would assume, we don't have very many over 20-acre parcels, and so that's something that I'm just wondering if, say, out on the baylands, those are all individual parcels, not one giant parcel that only pays one fee?
That's a good question, but I don't think they've been divided into individual parcels, so I think they pay on the higher end of the fees. But I can certainly follow this up with an email tomorrow and clarify that.
Okay. I'm sure that the research has been done, and that it's as fair and least burdensome as it could be made to be, so, that answers my questions.
Okay, and then you'll follow up with some of that info, huh, Karen? So, okay, so with that...
I will make a motion to approve resolution 2014-31.
Second.
Okay, we have motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that brings us to new business, which is consider approval of resolution number 2014-15 granting approval for a joint sewer line serving residents, residences in the 200 block of Humboldt Road. Staff report, please.
Mayor, members of the council, I'll do the best I can with this one in the absence of Public Works Director Randy Bro. He shared the background of this with me, that these property owners with the joint sewer line approached him about having an agreement to share the cost for maintenance of the sewer, and that there was not a background of a problem with the sewer or a repair that wasn't shared, they just wanted to formalize their arrangement. And some of the detail of the report talks about the existing easement, and the fact that in the legal description, one of the properties is not spelled out, but in the overarching language of the easement, all the properties are listed. So there's a, he said he's kind of bringing to attention something that's just a slight error in the legal description that largely, probably would not have an effect on the agreement, as an agreement is signed. It's, a prescriptive easement would likely still exist for all of these properties, but he, without going to court, that hasn't been established. So what this agenda report is asking for is the council to approve this joint sewer line agreement, so that these four properties share in costs to maintain their sewer and continue to have access to the maintenance easement over the property below on Sierra Point Road.
Okay, council questions?
On exhibit A, parcel two is listed twice, both with different owners, so I think that the third parcel listed should be listed as parcel three on exhibit A.
You're right.
That's a good catch, thank you.
And, reading through this, it appears that the parcels that are part of the agreement share the easement across parcel 110, but 110 is not responsible for the maintenance of that sewer line because they are not a beneficiary of that sewer line?
That's correct, yes.
So it is more just for an access easement, and they are also a signatory to this without having any financial obligations to this?
Correct.
That's my only questions.
Lori?
Well, I had sent some questions and comments to staff earlier in the week, and I was told that, one of my comments was that in the resolution, that one of the parcels, one of the properties, number 271 Humboldt, it says it goes across it, but it doesn't say that it runs through it, and that, I was told that would be corrected, so have we, is there an updated version of this?
Actually, I'm sorry, Director Bro did talk to me about that, and he said he has it on his calendar, when it's approved, to revise that before giving you the copy to sign.
Okay, so for the rest of the council, then, to let you know, then, in the third paragraph of the resolution...
Third whereas?
The third whereas clause, it says across the property of 271 Humboldt, and it should say runs through the properties of, and it should have all of, all of them listed, all four. So it should say 281, 277, 275, and 271, and then along 110, so that that change would be made. And then I had asked a question about, you know, whether there had been any sewer issues with these properties, why this was coming about, and my understanding was that there have, there's no anticipated repairs, and there haven't been any issues, is that correct?
Correct, I asked him the same question, and he said there was not a pre-existing problem, that they had just approached him to have an agreement rather than just an easement.
That the citizens of these parcels approached Randy?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's unusual.
Have we done this for any other easements, sewer easements, and how many other sewer easements are there like this that are privately owned?
One on my property.
I would be speculating, we've done this, we've done these agreements, but there are some of these situations where agreements are not in place.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure how many, but some are in that better situation where they have an agreement, and of course, every, so often, every couple years or so, there, somebody has a sewer backup, and there isn't an agreement in place, and there may or may not be an easement, and it's something that, sometimes we have initiated these, and that's why Mayor Conway made that comment, is we've had to initiate these agreements to kind of resolve these health and safety issues when the neighbors don't...
When there wasn't an agreement, it became a problem.
Right, and since it's, this, these, the sewer line is not owned or maintained by the city, it's incumbent upon the owners themselves to conduct the maintenance, so are they aware of this, that they'll be, you know, responsible for inspecting it or doing any regular maintenance, so it's not like if something happens, then, you know, uh-oh, you know, it has to be fixed, and, you know, hopefully they'll be able to keep an eye on it?
Yeah, yes, they are aware of that, this was the optimal situation, and they approached us.
Okay.
And because it's going to be recorded, it's going to be recorded on their deeds, so if they sell the property, the buyer have to be aware of it, and they're basically buying this agreement too, so.
Was, was this instigated by the fact that the property at 110 recently sold, and came up as an easement that was not a beneficial easement to them? Was that the driving factor?
I didn't think to ask the Public Works Director that question, so I'm not sure, but that's a reasonable hypothesis.
And then, property 271, it, the sewer line crosses it, but they are also a beneficiary of the sewer line?
That's what I was saying, that's what's going to be corrected.
Yes, that's correct.
Because they, they use the sewer line?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't have anything further.
Okay, it's not a public hearing, and, uh, I don't see anybody jumping out of their seat if they want to talk on this, so, uh, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2014-15.
I'll second.
Okay, motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And can I make one comment after the fact? It really was helpful to have the map that staff provided to me for, in the packet, um, and thank you for providing that to us so that we could see.
Pictures, words, the bottom words.
Pictures of what we were doing there.
Okay. Item B, which is consider adoption of Resolution Number 2014-32 supporting the application of San Bruno Mountain and corresponding areas as a priority conservation area. Staff report, please. Welcome, Fanny?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council members. The Priority Conservation Area, or PCA program, was formed in 2007 as a collaborative initiative between the Association for Bay Area Governments, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and the Bay Area Air Quality Management District as a means to identify key regional spaces in the Bay Area for environmental protection and conservation. More than 100 PCAs were designated, and in 2008, the first set of PCAs were adopted. Currently, San Mateo has seven designated PCAs. Designating San Bruno Mountain as a priority conservation area is an environmentally responsible move preserving one of the Bay Area's natural landmarks. The mountain not only offers recreational opportunities for local residents and communities, but is home to three endangered butterfly species and a variety of rare plants. The proposed San Bruno Mountain PCA will include San Bruno Mountain and other adjacent properties, including, but not limited to, Quaker Park Trails and portions of the Brisbane, Brisbane Baylands. The adoption of the PCA will not also, will not change zoning, general plan, or other land use designations in the geographic area encompassed by the PCA. On the fiscal level, there are grant opportunities that specifically allocates funding for conservation and preservation efforts in the designated PCA. That concludes my staff report, I would be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Fanny, any council questions?
Um, I, we, we had a letter from, or an email.
Dana Dilworth?
From Dana Dilworth. I did not bring a copy of it with me, I thought we'd have one here.
She wanted to, um, put in, I think, an item, the fourth whereas, 1234, San Bruno Mountain is a repository of three endangered butterflies, numerous local and regional and national rare plants, but I think she wanted to insert California red-legged frog and San Francisco garter snake, and that's probably not an issue, Mr. City Attorney?
Sorry?
The, the question was, is that we received a letter from, uh, Citizen Dana Dilworth, who wanted to insert, uh, and I think in, in the fourth whereas, where it says, uh, San Bruno Mountain is a repository of three endangered butterflies, numerous local, regional, and national rare plants, but she also wanted to put, um, two endangered species, the California red-legged frog and the San Francisco garter snake, and I said that wouldn't be a problem to put that in there, right?
No, assuming that they're on the mountain, and that's accurate, and no problem at all.
Yeah, and...
They may not be there, but they may come back, and I think her other comment was she wanted to see if it was possible to add the lagoon as, um, an area that could be contained in the, um, PCA designation to make it as broad and diverse as possible.
Clay, you want to, uh...
Well, I'm thinking that, that is part of the Brisbane Baylands, but if you want to just, you know, make it clear, Brisbane Baylands and lagoon, we could do that.
Well, I think that the lagoon, lagoon could, um, add some funding opportunities because it is a waterway, so it could give it a little bit more broad spectrum.
How about if we say portions of the Brisbane Baylands, which includes the lagoon?
Yeah.
Okay, that's covered.
Yes, thank you.
Don't, don't leave yet, Fanny.
It was just...
Get warmed up, man, you did a good job, but, you know, now, now, you asked for this, so. Clay really wanted us to, no. Just kidding, yeah. Any other?
That was, that was my comment, um...
Yeah.
Lori?
And my understanding is that this, this, uh, resolution is going around to all of the cities and the county, um, so whatever, I don't know if any of the other cities, the ones, you know, surrounding San Bruno Mountain have, if they've already passed this, but it probably makes sense.
I think Ken is ready to respond to that.
Yeah, if, if they can be consistent with our wording.
Yeah, I know, I talked to, uh, Priti Gupta, who is actually on ABAG, in South San Francisco City Council, and, and, uh, he was asking if we were going to do it, because they want to do it also, and I think probably, uh, Daly City also, but...
Okay, so if Ken could perhaps, you know, refer the language to the other cities, whatever we adopt, if they haven't yet adopted it, um, I think that would be good. And, and one question I had asked staff to clarify was, you know, whether having, um, a priority conservation area designation was possible if there's already a priority development designation, as there is for the baylands, and my understanding was that it, it is possible to have both because it's just about funding opportunities. Um, so, you know, portions of the baylands, e- even though, you know, you would have potentially conservation measures and, and potentially development measures, but the, the funding would be in place for both, and they wouldn't be inconsistent. So that was, that was one of my questions. Um, and that the, the language was sort of intentionally vague so that it could capture, you know, funding where possible. Because I, I wasn't sure when it said baylands, what that included, and Crocker Park, my question was whether that included the, the wetlands, um, which, um, Mountain Watch has been working on the restoration efforts for, I thought it would be good to include that. So, um, what I, what I heard back from staff was that, that the language is intentionally vague so that it does include as much area as possible.
It could be conservation of buildings, different, you know, it's a pretty wide swath, I think, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, so...
And it looks like on most of the, um, uh, application process, it, it wants you to, you know, besides just our, or, our resolution, that any applications for approval or for, you know, when it goes to ABAG, they're going to want more information and more, um, specifics on what's there and why it's important to conserve, so.
Mm-hmm.
I think a lot of that we can work on as it goes forward to get approval in the other areas.
Okay, thank you, Fanny, good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, this is not a public hearing, but, uh, we do have somebody jumping out of their seat, so come on up, Ken.
Hi, you guys, Ken McIntyre from San Bruno Mountain Watch. So I'm working on this with the other cities and, and with the county, and, uh, one thing about Brisbane's is, uh, what about the acres? Weren't they going to be included as, as, as part of it too? That's a question, but, you know, it doesn't, I don't think, have to be answered right now, because in the application, you know, they want maps that spell it out, what's in and what's not, and acreage, and descriptions, and things like that, um, so I think it would be good to leave it intentionally vague. Now, like South San Francisco, before they pass the resolution, they want to do all of that defining, but the San Mateo County, you know, was, you know, my advice from people in San Mateo County was just pass a vague resolution and then do the defining later. So passing the resolution is just like an intention, and then, then you have the definition. South San Francisco's very into the process too, and, uh, you know, their Parks Department, and they have, you know, they've got a, a master biking plan and a master pedestrian plan, and, and all these things that they may be trying to tie in. One of the, one of the, um, kinds of designations is, uh, regional recreation, so, and it, since it's the center of the San Bruno Mountain, then, uh, connectivity to San Bruno Mountain and connectivity to the Bay Trail, or even potentially the Ridge Trail is, um, important. So the cities can, can really kind of like dream, and why not? I talked to the, Laura Thompson is the ABAG person, point person on this, and she was saying that their executive committee is having a meeting tonight. Uh, one thing that has come up, didn't come up here, but has come up everywhere else, is, um, that issue of, of private property rights, and so a lot of people, even though the language is there, and it's pretty well-spelled out, but it's short, you know, it's like, this has no land use authority, um, the cities, or retain their rights to zoning and, and all of that, but they are going to ask that private property owners all be notified, any, any, that, any private property owners that fall within the eventual designation need to be notified, and they're going to have some guidelines coming out of their meeting tonight on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's pretty much all I have. Daly City is, I think, going to be on board too, it's a little, just started talking to them.
Right. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, council's pleasure. We had a couple small adjustments here, so you capture those and...
I would, um, make a motion to approve Resolution 2014-32 with the minor modifications.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Now I'm going to say it, we're really on a roll. No. Okay, all right. Item C, which is consider approval of Resolution Number 2014-30 and Resolution Number GVMID 2014-02 authorizing the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, known as BAUSKA, to initiate, defend, and settle arbitration related to the water supply agreement with the city and county of San Francisco. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, it was, if this had gone later, Director Bro might have been back to present this item himself, but I find myself here again.
Trying to ferret, there's something that... He said, "I'll be there," thinking that we're going to be into the midnight hour tonight?
He's actually at a BAUSKA board meeting, right? So my understanding is that we, BAUSKA negotiates the water rates for us each year based on the prior year's expenses and the proportional share of water that we use, and we do not have a formal agreement to have them do that and to be able to initiate, defend, and settle arbitration for us, and they have asked us for these resolutions from the city and from GVMID to formalize that arrangement that we have had in the past. Can I try to answer the questions you might have from here?
Clay, let's put you on the spot, you want to add anything on this?
No, I think Karen's presentation captured it.
Yeah. Okay, council questions?
I want to make, this is just to negotiate the rates for the water that Brisbane is obtaining currently through San Francisco SFPD, uh, SF?
PUC.
PUC, and would have no effect on the negotiations for the potential water wheeling agreement, um, that's through the baylands.
No.
With...
Yeah, this is just on current status quo of what we have, which is a little less than 1 million gallons a day, I think, where a lot of it... Okay, um, I did, um, I didn't write it down. Okay, oh, David, since there's two different resolutions, one's for City of Brisbane, the other's GVMID, um, we don't have to adopt one and then come back and adopt the other under, wearing another hat, so we can...
Your meeting is a combined board, so it's fine to adopt both of them at the same time.
Okay, the motion would be to, uh, approve Resolution Number 2014-30 and Resolution Number GVMID 2014-02, or should we do it separately?
You can do them at the same time, uh, as you just proposed.
Okay, so does anybody wish to make that motion?
I will make that motion, um, to approve 2014-30 and GM...
GVMID.
GVMID, and should that be part of the resolution, that that GVMID is in that 2014-02?
Part of the motion?
Because it doesn't, it, I guess, says it here, but I don't know if it should be in the title.
Oh, in the title of the paper, yeah. Yeah, I think, uh, it's, it says it below.
It says it below, I just, so...
Are you looking at the resolution, or the...
No, the resolution number, should it say GVMID Resolution Number?
With that change, I will move approval of both resolutions.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That brings us to staff reports, city manager to report on upcoming activities.
Got about an hour and a half presented now. No report tonight.
Wow. Must be going on vacation or something. Okay, uh, brings us to mayor council matters, uh, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. Lori, I know you want to talk about some things.
Sure, since we have time tonight, there were a couple of meetings that I had attended over the last month that I thought I would update everyone on, so let's see. Um, okay, so, it's been a while, but, um, I actually brought my prior agendas, so I would remember. So the Health and Safety Subcommittee met on June 5th, and we talked about, um, putting in pedestrian crossing signs, which are now up, um, as a result of that Subcommittee meeting on Old County Road at two locations, so that's where that came from, in case people were wondering. Um, a number of residents had expressed concern that the signs had come down and it wasn't safe, or they felt, you know, there might be some safety concerns for their children and, and other residents for crossing from the county, community park to the shopping center, and from the community park to the skate park, so that those two crossing, um, crossing, um, signs, there, there's now signs up. Um, and we are, um, having staff look into, um, the gates, um, around the sides of the bathroom at the community park, um, to see if, what the cost would be, because some residents had expressed concerns about, you know, finding a way to control children from going from behind the playground and entering the crosswalk, and that while the pedestrian sign does do something to, to help prevent any, any accidents, um, you know, gates may be an, an additional option, so we're having staff look into that, um, and those were sort of the two major items there. Um, and then we also met, um, on the Public Information and Technology Subcommittee, that's Clark and myself, on May 29th, and we reviewed the updated social media policy, and we looked at the, the tools that we currently have, um, on our city website, the feedback tool for citizens to, um, have some sort of online communication with the city, and so, um, the city's going to be letting people know that that tool is available, putting something on the, in Star about it, and, um, making it more prominent on the website, what that red tab on the side actually means. Um, and also, the, the council will be getting updates monthly or on some regular basis of any, a summary of any comments that are posted, um, so that, you know, the council... basis of any, a summary of any comments that are posted, so that, you know, the council is aware of what, what the public is, is actually writing on the, in the feedback forum tool, how they're using that. And then, for Economic Development, we had a meeting on June 28th where we had a special events presentation by Jeff Stone and John McCasie from Sacramento, and they were talking about what are some ways to use, to use special events as an economic development tool, to, to give us some examples of ways that Rancho Cordova and Sacramento have attracted various sporting events to the area to help increase their hotel stays and, you know, bring more revenue to the city, so that was very informative, and, and we also looked at the Crocker Park building occupancy rate. And then, the last thing I want to mention was I, I went to the Sea Level Rise Conference, Congresswoman Jackie Speer put on a second conference, there was one in December, and then this one was for elected officials, and it was down in Foster City about a month ago, along with Supervisor Dave Pine and Assemblyman Rich Gordon, and it was really interesting, basically, the, the takeaway from that was that, based on the, the scientific studies, that by the end of the century, we're looking at a, or we should be planning for a three-foot rise in sea level, and that forming a countywide task force to address ways to, to, you know, not necessarily to stop the sea level rise, but to plan for it, because so much of our infrastructure is on, on the bay, and so, that is one thing that the, the county is hoping to move forward on, and right now, they have a countywide task force in Santa Clara, but we don't have one in San Mateo, so that'll be good, because there's some additional funding at the state level. I think $2.6 million was allotted towards tackling sea level rise issues, so this will be a way, if we can put a task force in place, to look at ways to get some of that funding. So, that was all my reports.
Terry?
No reports.
Okay. Clay, I just hit on something that Lori talked about, was the Crocker Park occupancy rate, and I think, was it 95% now, or?
Well, we just went back today and kind of recalculated that, and it's, it's, it's around, I think what it'd be safe to say is it's 90, 91% plus, so it's, what I think people see a lot are, are signs, you know, particularly on Valley Drive, some of those are sublet signs, or signs for sublets, but the park has, has really come back in terms of occupancy, and I think one of the things we're looking at doing is, is probably trying to highlight some of the new businesses that have come into town and put that in articles in our, some of our publications, as well as, the Chamber's going to be looking at doing that in their, in their publications, let, just let people know who's, who's in town now.
Be great.
I don't have any Subcommittee reports. I know Commander Meisner and myself attended a filming of Mythbusters episode yesterday at the Brisbane Pool, and they really liked our facility, they really like Brisbane, and they want to know more about us, so it's pretty interesting, so. I think Bobby volunteered to do a tour for their production director or something, eh? Show all the amenities, the shooting range, the quarry, and all these things that they...
That's correct. I, I do administer the film permits in town, so it's, it's customary for me to build a relationship with the producers for that particular shoot or any future shoot, so they are very interested, they loved it in Brisbane, they loved the environment and what we had to offer, so hopefully, I will be meeting with them again to see if there's something else we can do for them.
Yeah.
Oh, and two other things I wanted to mention, I forgot. On Health and Safety, one other thing that the, actually, Teresa Strick, our Assistant City, or Deputy City Attorney, is looking at is the noise ordinance. We talked at that meeting, the Subcommittee meeting, about citizen complaints about noise issues from firecrackers or motorcycles, or, you know, things that might be loud and annoying, but not necessarily continuous, so it doesn't necessarily fall under the noise ordinance as it's currently written, so she's taking a look at the, the noise ordinance language to see how we might be able to broaden it to include the types of annoying nighttime noises that people sometimes hear in Brisbane. And, and then there was also a discussion about dog walkers, about whether there's any concerns about how many dogs one person can walk, because some people had said that they're at the dog park with, you know, one dog, and they see one person with, I don't know, five, 10 dogs, and it's just, it's a little bit aggressive for, for maybe one dog and to be confronted by so many dogs, so I, she, I think that they were going to look, she was going to look into whether there's any rules that we have in place about the number of dogs that can be on one, with one dog walker.
I remember that being brought up before, you know, all that.
Yeah, and then the third thing was, in conjunction with the, the playground safety issues, we talked a little about Silver Spot, and some residents had brought up the issue about bathroom access, and currently, you know, people can go to the pool if it is open or use, some people have been using Silver Spot, and the city was going to talk with Silver Spot about whether we might be able to, you know, whether the public would be able to use the, the bathroom at Silver Spot if they're at the top lot, so, just wanted to remind people that's on the radar as well.
Yeah, I, I know, History Subcommittee also had gone over, was, some corrections on the history book, and Clay, I don't know if you wanted to fill us in on the status of that, some of it was verification, and it had to come back to us, and I know we kind of...
Yeah, I think, I think it's at the, you know, the company that's doing the project for us, I think they got it and are doing the formatting, so that should be coming back to the Subcommittee fairly soon. I know that we have a goal of having it ready and printed for this holiday season.
Yeah.
This holiday season.
Christmas.
Christmas.
2014.
2014.
Yeah, Turkey Day.
So, we'll see if we make that.
Okay.
So, on a follow-up to a question on Lori's comments, the public, on the Tech Subcommittee, the public forum, the comments that people put in on the forum or on our website, are those anonymous, are they, are they vetted, or how are they going to be processed, or do you have an idea?
Well, I've looked at the website, and I've seen like, people's, at least people's first names, I think people can decide if they want to put their, their name, I don't know if they have to put any sort of identification, or, I know I've seen some people just by first name, and then people have the ability to go in and vote on if they have an idea, and then if, you can see how many, how popular certain ideas are.
People like it.
Yeah, and, and as of, you know, currently, we're not, the council has not been receiving any report on, on this, so, you know, you may go and look at the website, but otherwise, there's no way for us to...
So, when you say vote on it, like liking something on Facebook kind of thing?
Exactly, something like that.
Okay.
But I, I think right now, it's such a small amount of population that's using that tool, and the other tools that we looked at, that other cities are doing, in Fremont, they have something called Open City Hall, that's run by Peak Democracy, so they have a contract with this company, I forget how much it is, but something maybe like $8,000 or something, and it's, it's a whole website that's interactive. South San Francisco has another system that's called South San Francisco Connect, and that's run by Mind Mixer, that's maybe $3,000 or so, but we decided, and, and that one was interesting, I thought it had a lot of good usability, and the, the interface just was very friendly, like, it was almost like Facebook, very casual, but we decided that rather than spending money on these outside systems, that we would try to use first what we have and publicize it, and...
No, I just wanted to, to get an idea if, if it was anonymous or it was vetted, so people can't just post things that, that everything's vetted through us, that we're not putting something back out that would be inappropriate.
Right.
We, we do vet it.
Moderate.
You know if people have to leave their last, their first or last names?
No, they can sign it as anonymous.
They can.
That's one of their choices.
Okay.
But we would see if someone was making inappropriate posts.
Right, oh yeah.
Yeah.
And then...
Yeah, the city has the ability to, I believe, to remove...
To not accept or post the comment, it's reviewed before it's public.
And then, on, again, on the public safety noise ordinance that you were talking about with the Deputy City Attorney, I would, my newest pet peeve, and it's been going on for a couple years, and I think it's more police-related than noise ordinance-related, is the doing donuts in the parking lot and on our Tunnel Avenue and Visitation Avenue, you know, if you drive down any of those roads, you will see the marks where people are sitting there doing donuts late at night, and we all hear it from our homes, it's very annoying, I go to my window and look out and try to see where it's coming from, but they're there and they're gone so quick, and so, that's something that perhaps if we add that somehow into our public safety, because if they're doing that, they're reckless driving, and it's my understanding that it may be possible to be able to have citizens report when they see that, because that isn't a kind of citation that needs to necessarily be witnessed by the police. I think it can be reported by, by individuals if they see that kind of activity, and so...
Bobby, you want to comment on that?
Well, absolutely, and we rely on the public quite a bit for those types of complaints, like, because like you say, they, they do their business and they're gone so quickly, so the faster we are notified, the better. I can tell you, we have been successful in, in making more than one arrest and prosecution for that out at Marina, to the extent that it's not only reckless driving, but it's also vandalism, as one of the incidents took place on private property, so we're pursuing that as well. So, it is something we're aware of, it's something the officers are aware of, and they're, and they're paying closer attention to those areas where it's happening, so, but as always, we do ask for the citizens' help to call us right away so we can get to the area and catch them.
That's good, and I mean, you see it, it's, it's happening right there by where the, our dumpsters are, the Brisbane dumpsters, which I tend to come down that road late at night a lot, and almost every night, there's people out there at midnight dumping and rooting through the dumpsters, and, and it's something I find very annoying.
Is that, you know, I can actually speak to that, that issue with...
Oh, good.
As, as you know, we're, we're in the process of renewing our scavengers agreement and then doing a new agreement with Recology for the Zone 3, the Baylands, and, and as part of that process, and also in trying to deal with our regional water quality control permit, we're going to be recommending the change, kind of the program that we have out there, and part of that will be eliminating the, the current dumpsters that are out there. You know, it's been, as we all know, the, the good news is it's been successful, and the bad news, it's been successful, because it's, it's just been a magnet for people to dump there, and then also become now a magnet for people to scavenge through it and get metals and whatever they're getting. So, we anticipate right now that we will cease that program probably somewhere around October 1st, and we're working with the property owner out there, UPC, to implement a new program and get a little better involvement on their part. They are involved currently, they do do a run every Monday afternoon up and down Tunnel Avenue, but we're going to look at some things to do, a little bit more better monitoring in, as well as some enforcement issues, so that program will be changing sometime in the next couple months. And then also, just in, and Bob, I know Mike could speak to this, Chief Macias told me this past week that we actually, in terms of, kind of a good story in terms of citizen involvement in, in identifying problems, is that, as you know, we always get a lot of firecrackers and fireworks around the 4th of July, and we actually had a citizen who was actually able to, I think, actually film somebody doing something, and it reported to the police department, and they were able to act upon that, so the citizens out there seeing things, reporting it, getting pictures, you know, very much helps the police department do their job.
Always their safety first, though.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, be, be careful.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, anything else under Subcommittee? We've still got an hour and 42 minutes, I mean. All right, Written Communications, we had the one from Dana Dilworth, and also the one on the BOSCA letter, so it was all taken care of, and Item C, which is Designation of Voting Delegates and Alternates for League of California Cities Annual Conference, September 3rd and 5th in Los Angeles. So, the way this normally goes is the mayor votes, and I'm planning on attending, and Lori, you're going to attend also, right?
Cliff's attending.
And Cliff will as well, so I think you can have two alternates.
Yeah, so we have voting alternate number two, and one is number three. How does that work, Sherri, you know?
You can't have one, you're obviously...
Can you turn your microphone on? Sorry.
You're, yeah, since you are attending, you'd obviously be the delegate, and you can appoint two alternates, and then, what, was your question, how do they rank?
Yeah, does the number designate which one would be allowed to vote, or what, I mean, like number two, number three?
Yeah, I'd have to read that, but it may be, go by seniority then, or maybe you would have to select...
I don't have it in front of me.
It says voting delegate, alternate, alternate, so...
So, doesn't look like... Are you going or are we going?
Three.
So, I don't think it matters what order we put the alternates in.
Yeah.
Is that your question?
So, up to them, any, either one could be an alternate if you did not attend, and...
Okay, all right, so we'll just put Lori and Cliff down as alternates, and, and then myself as the voting delegate.
Yep.
Sound all right?
Do we need to vote on that, or is that just a council matter?
No, we don't need to. Ray, if you're watching, or Cliff, if you're watching, notice the time, it's 8:40 PM. Brings us to Oral Communications, number two, and the House cleared out, so, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.